Okay.
Hold on, Brian. All right, let's call me New York's camera night twenty twenty five six P M. Please stand for pledge of allegiance. The United States of America in due republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Crossman.
Here.
Member Kingizer.
Here.
Member Hess.
Here.
Member Johnstone.
Here.
Member Kaminsky.
Here.
Mayor Pinto.
Here. Thank you. Can we get an agenda approval? Councilmember Kaminsky.
Approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
So we can't for Kingizer. Any discussion? All is fair, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Moving on to special presentations. We have Lynn here who's going to be giving our, giving a update on our new website and parks recreation recap.
I am. Very good. I'm going to share my screen.
Those watching above, Lynn is our communications and recreation coordinator.
Looking for like a full screen situation here. Nope, not that, sorry.
Perfect.
Um, hello. Good evening, mayor. Good evening, council. Thank you for having me tonight. My name is Lynn Roy, um, for those not in this room, um, and I'm the communication recreation coordinator for the city of Yelm. Um, and tonight we are going to celebrate the impact of our recreation programs, um, events, our programs, events and partnerships from twenty twenty five, and we'll share a little bit of a look ahead, um, to see what's in store for twenty twenty six. Everything. Everything that we do is rooted in making Yelm a fun, healthy and connected community. Um, our mission is simple, to build experiences that bring people together and create lasting memories. Uh, this year was full of growth and connection. We're on track to close out twenty twenty five with about seventy five total events. Uh, that is an average of about six per month. Or about one and a half a week. Um, our events reached thousands of residents and visitors, showcasing Yelm as a vibrant place to live and play. Uh, this year we have been able to expand thanks to, um, partnerships. There we go. This year we've been able to expand thanks to partnerships with some incredible local organizations and businesses. Uh, the Yelm Timberland Library helped bring sunshine and story times, the reptile lady storytelling and drumming, uh, magician Jeff Evans, and our story trail. Uh, we partnered with the Lions Club for Prairie Days Bingo and Movies in the Park. We've teamed up with Yard, Anytime Fitness, Zumba, Get Fit Yelm, Standing Room Only, um, among many others. Uh, local nonprofits, the schools, city departments and businesses all step up to make sure our events are possible. And because of these collaborations, uh, we've been able to say yes to a lot more things. Um, that collaboration is key to everything that we do and our partnerships are, I think, are one of our greatest strengths. Um, Prairie Days, our largest event, we brought in about a thousand more people than we did Prairie Days last year. Um, so that's really incredible. We pull our numbers with geofencing. We partner with Experience Olympian Beyond, um, who can geofence our prairies area so that we can, uh, count those, um, those visitors as they come in. The cool thing about that, it also tracks our residents that show up for those events as well as people who are traveling in. So if they're coming in from, um, Seattle or Vancouver or, um, outside of our, our area, we know that these visitors are coming in and they're getting to experience our community.
So how does that actually work, the geofencing? There it is.
That's a wonderful question. Excellent question. Um, so it's, it pouts your cell phone. So you know when, if you download a new app and there's a thing in there and it says ask app not to track. So like just for me, never hit allow, hit yes, let Lynn know where I am. Uh, so it pulls the, your data, um, if you open your phone, if you use your phone, it'll say, oh, there's a user. Oh, there's a user. Um, it's not all the time. Like I can't go and say how many people are at the park right now? Where did they come from? It's, I want to, I want to geofence this specific area for this amount of time. How many distinct users do we have? We don't get any other information, like can I call these users? Can I, you know, invite them to the next event? Um, it's just twelve people were there or, you know, fifty two thousand ninety one people. So it's, it's tech based. It's a little weird.
Got it.
But I'm grateful for it. So, um, it helps, it helps know, uh, that these people aren't visiting. Um. We welcomed about a thousand more people in this year's Prairie Days than we did last year. Um, our four day festival kicked off with bingo again with Alliance Club on Thursday. Um, that was a nod to the traditions of the eighties and nineties. Um, Friday featured our party on the prairie. Saturday was Kids' Day, um, hosted by the Yelm Chamber of Commerce. And then after that, we had lots of kids events and contests and a pie baking contest, a photo exhibition, um, live entertainment. Um, and then we wrapped up on Sunday with our, uh, much beloved, uh, mush ball, charity mush ball tournament. Um, and this year we raised about a thousand dollars for the Cure San Filippo Foundation. Um, this is where you get your calendars out because next year's Prairie Days is set for June twenty fifth through the twenty eighth. Um, we're going to keep fan favorites like the bingo, the Kids' Day, the mush ball tournament, the parades, um, and then we're going to explore some new ideas, um, like maybe a Friday night car show or a bubble party to kind of keep the momentum going and keep our events fresh and fun. Uh, Prairie Days always reminds us that, um, that Yelm really knows how to have a good time. This year, uh, we also received a grant from Park to host steam powered recreation programming, uh, that science, technology, engineering, arts and math. Um, this year that meant Galaxy Fest, Dinosaur Day, Scoop Fest, Little Buccaneer Bash, um, and Boo Bash. Those last two we're still looking forward to in the fall. Uh, but these steam powered recreation programs are, um, arts and arts and crafts and science and engineering. Um, the kids do Lego building and, um, they've made sun catchers and learned about how ice cream is made. Um, so they're very targeted to, um, to our little learners. Um, Boo Bash and Little Buccaneer Bash still to look forward to. Uh, we have introduced new programs while continuing traditions that people look forward to, uh, year after year. Our work is about more than just events though. Um, it's about building pride and belonging. The feedback that we receive from residents like this one, these events make me proud to live in Yelm. Um, it shows how important recreation is to quality of life right here in Yelm. Um, looking ahead, there she is. Looking ahead, our fall and winter events are shaping up to be just as exciting. We will launch a ceramics class in October. We'll continue with our cookie decorating workshops. Um, again, we'll host a Boo Bash on the twenty fifth and a haunted market on the twenty third of October. The holiday season will kick off, uh, December fifth with pictures with Santa and our tree lighting. And then of course, Christmas in the park on the sixth. Morning with Mrs. Claus will return on December thirteenth and the Cocoa Trail, Santa Paws, our winter solstice walk and Santa's sleigh ride are coming back after phenomenal success last year. Oh, just kidding. And we're already planning for twenty twenty six, building on the momentum of this year, um, including the return of community favorites. We'll be celebrating some major milestones like America's two hundred and fiftieth birthday and introducing new events like backyard bricks. Uh, we manage our resources really carefully, leveraging sponsorships and in-kind donations, uh, to stretch our budget. And because here in Yelm, uh, because here in Yelm, we're not just planning events, we are building our, our own community. I say nearly every day how grateful I am to have this role. Um, it's a privilege to get to create moments and memories that bring joy and connection and, and build our community. Uh, getting to do this for Yelm, for the community that I love is, um, it's just the greatest. So thank you for letting me be a part of this community and, and continue doing that. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Lynn. Wonderful presentation. Any questions from council, comments?
Okay.
Councilor Kingizer.
Um, thank you for bringing all of that. Um, watching you go from our chamber director to filling this role and then to seeing over a hundred events, seventy five projected for twenty twenty six, like it's, yeah, it's really neat to be part of this community and watch you create and come up with the ideas and just one of these, yeah, one of these days I'll get over there and make cookies with you.
Other questions, comments? Thank you very much, Lynn.
You're welcome. Do you want to see the website? That was the next.
Oh, I'm sorry. That was the other part of the presentation. Let's continue.
We just, we just keep it moving here. Oh, hey. Uh, so, welcome to our beautiful new website. Um, this is the homepage. This is what our, our residents, our visitors see when they pop on here. This of course is a picture of our centennial celebration from last year. Um, some of the really cool things that, the really cool features that I like, um, we have this. We have, we have this, um, news, news flash, I, I call it. So we can adjust this for, um, anything that's happening. So if there's a big major emergency and we want to, you know, make sure that people are seeing it right away, if it's, um, if we want to draw attention to information that's out there, we can put that right there and make it so that it is front and center. It's ready for, ready for anything. Um, some of the features that I really am impressed with or, um, I'm excited to see that was, I think, a big change from the last website is right down along this stretch here, we have, um, kind of our, our quick links, our, the, the hot things that people are going to want to see every day. Uh, you can see your, our public notices, news, agendas and minutes, uh, request your public records right there. Um, this is just a little bit slow. It's not picking up as quickly as I want it to. Um, you can participate in the city's comprehensive plan. Um, and then up on the top here, this is our top navigation bar. Uh, some of the really cool things, um, you have your government. It's divided into, I think better sections than the, than the old website was. Uh, if you remember, it said like work, play, live, and what do, what do those mean? Um, so this is a lot more clear. If you want to talk about the, um, the government, you want to send a comment to the mayor or to you guys at city council, it's right here in your government. Um, it outlines the boards and commissions, our transparency, um, everything is just right there. We pop right over to our departments and everything is, um, is broken out. You have your executive department, your H R, uh, planning and building, your police, your utilities, so that it's easy to find things. Um, you pop on over to community and this is kind of our, our fun zone. Um, it talks about our military connection as a community, our resident guide, our recreational activities. Um, and then again, ways to stay informed with, um, our agendas and minutes and, and election information. And then our services, um, you're going to pop over to business, you're going to learn, that's where your, your permits, your, um, doing business in Yelm is right there, your emergency management. Um, again, you can request public records, um, reserve the community center. You'll see there are some places that you're going to see things more than once. Um, and that's just to make it easier for our residents to find things when they need it. It's, you know, am I as a resident, if I'm looking to rent the community center, am I going to go to community? Am I going to go to services? Why not make it in both places so that wherever, we'll meet them where they are. Um, we just want to make sure that all of our information is really easy to find and, um, people are able to, to access that as quickly and easily as possible. Um, I know that you have kind of played around with it. It's been live for about a month, maybe six weeks now. Um, so I know you guys have visited and, and have seen it. I, you know, you've sent me a couple of things to make some adjustments to. Um, so I get, I've done those. Um, but we do have lots of information out there for, you know, for you guys, for our residents, for anybody to take a peek at. Lynn, is the documentary still on there, on the community part? It is, uh, community. And then. Oh, that is in, um, explore where you'll have our community events, um, parks, history museum. Uh, so it's, it connects through YouTube to there. Yeah.
Questions, comments? Councilor Kingizer.
Uh, those little white tabs on the bottom.
Yep.
Are those things?
Yeah.
Yeah. Are those personalized?
No, those are.
Oh. So I feel like when I go on mine, it doesn't show those same ones.
It's a little bit further down, I think. She has it over the participate in the cities.
There are, you, if you press that little arrow.
Arrow thing.
Yeah. There's like nine of them, I think, up there. So it might just be on a different beginning point on yours.
Other questions about the website, comments? Again, thank you very much, Lynn. Appreciate it.
You guys.
Alrighty, moving on next to public comment. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to comment? Anyone online?
You do not have any hands raised.
Alrighty, moving on to our consent agenda. We have two items on the consent agenda, the August twenty sixth, twenty twenty five regular meeting minutes and the September second, twenty twenty five study session minutes. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Councilor Hess.
Move to approve the consent agenda, please.
Is there a second? Second by Councilor Johnstone. Any discussion? All is fair, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Moving on to new business. We have amendments six and seven to the phase two W R F upgrades professional service grant with parametrics. Cody.
Hello, council. So before we use amendment six and seven, um, to the W R F phase two upgrades, um, you'll notice that there's two amendments. One is for a net benefit and one's for a new add-on. Um, so we did save some money in the liquid side of the phase. We are spending a little money on the solid side and that's because we're adding a second biodryer. So we know that probably in the next three to four years, we're going to add another biodryer because the project took so long, let's add it now and not have to have another group come back in three years and just put it in. So we can buy it now, get it in, install it and at a minimal cost versus in a couple of years having to pay another firm to come in and install it. So that's what these two amendments are. So over the course of the life of the project, um, it's, we're only about three hundred thousand dollars off and one hundred thousand positive, two hundred thousand negative over a thirty four million dollar project. So I'm too shabby. We're all happy to answer any questions. We did present this to Public Services Committee and it has been reviewed by the attorney.
Councilmember Wood.
Uh, I move we authorize Mayor Pinto to approve amendments six and seven to the phase two W R F upgrades agreement in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars for work associated with the addition of a second biodryer.
So, so I, Councilor Hess, any discussion? All is fair, say aye. Alright. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you, Cody.
Alright, moving on to old business, as scheduled, moving on to standing council committee reports, starting with the public safety committee.
Hold on.
You're good.
We got a wonderful, uh, public, uh, safety meeting, uh, and lots to do. Yes, okay. And let's see, first of all, we talked about the flock system. A total of eight cameras are running, operational at this time. Uh, so that's what's going, that, that's happening. And so we're able to see not only that vehicles coming in, but also vehicles leaving. Uh, in reference to the vehicle graphics, the new ones have, are starting to be installed. Uh, they, we were originally going to work, the chief of the city wanted to work with the, the graphics here in town, but the, uh, business that installs all of our upgrades for a vehicle had offered a lower price for the graphics. And so we continued with, uh, having graphics put on by that element. Uh, the S R O contract, two S R Os, uh, one of them, it's his first time and he's a very happy individual, as Chief put it, very, uh, uh, welcoming for the children. And so that started with the school year. Uh, looking into a drone program, the drone program, he's looking into it, uh, be about a cost of twelve thousand dollars. With a grant, we'll be able to get the cost dropped down a little bit. And it's for a total of eight individuals. Four of them would be police officers, four of them will come, will go to the public service, uh, department. And, uh, when they are completely done with their training, they will be able to take the FAA certification test to fly drones. Uh, we did discuss, uh, concerns in reference to the privacy of people. And so he's going, the chief is going to make sure that he has everything lined up for us, uh, for when it gets presented of looking out for their privacy, their fourth amendment rights and such, not only for law enforcement, but also for the public service department to make sure that we are not being invasive. Uh, then the chaplain program, uh, we brought in, he's brought in a, I think it was Ms. Slates, uh, to the program, a young resident. And so this is the first time with law enforcement, uh, getting in touch with the sheriff to learn more about how that chaplain program can work. And she's going to start, uh, working with, uh, individuals on the police force just to kind of build that rapport so that then when they get brought on fully and fully trained, there's that rapport that officers can talk after an incident. Uh, staffing, uh, we have two individuals that are currently not able to do their duties. Uh, one has an injured shoulder and so will not, will no longer be able to perform the duty. So we have that opening that we're going to fill. And then we have one moving on for family, uh, as well. So, uh, we will, it looks like we might have two openings coming up that we have to fill. Uh, both squads will still be functional. Uh, we also have a recent grad, uh, that is skip, that is going through the on the job training portion here. We have two that we're awaiting, uh, that they'll be done and fully certified within the next three months. So we should have those two, uh, those three new officers. And we're in the process of looking at a lateral transfer as well. Uh, the sergeant test results, uh, Nissan, uh, did really well, Nissan, Nissan did really well, and they are being, they're promoted and providing the great work. Uh, we also talked about, uh, a new, uh, report that is being done by the chief, the W A D A P S. Uh, it's, uh, working with, uh, Washington State University. It is looking at use of force. Uh, they, he doesn't have to report to them. It's, they are taking the information from the database that they already fill for use of force. And the results for this study are to take a look and see what can be done in the future to help alleviate use of force. Uh, to what extent does our particular traffic stop or particular call that always, um, escalates so that they can, with their training. Uh, he's still looking into it, uh, finding some bugs with the program, but they have started that, uh, last month, started working with them. From the fire department, um, the Bald Hills Levy Lift, uh, that's with the county, uh, want to try to get some clarification of how, you know, are they going to be with Southeast Thurston? And they are their own municipality. Uh, they're also in the process of getting a backup fire engine equipped at this time. So they will have a second, uh, fire truck there that is the backup one in case the primary goes, uh, goes awry. And, uh, then they're also looking at, uh, hopefully being able to purchase a ladder truck prior to the first sixty foot building being, uh, built. Uh, currently they are able to, uh, with our three story apartment, uh, the apartment complexes, they're able to still with the ladders and all take care of and provide what needs to be provided. So there is no issues there. Uh, and our court reporter, she was on vacation and that's all we have.
Alrighty, thank you. Moving on to public services committee.
Meeting.
Okay, moving on to finance committee.
Tonight's meeting was canceled.
Moving on to general government committee.
Our meeting is at the end of the month, so I'll have something to report next meeting.
Alrighty, moving on to mayor, city minister, staff reports. Todd.
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, council. Just a couple, uh, updates from the various departments. Um, in addition to council member Hess's, uh, report from the police department, um, they have now a prescription drug drop box that is back in their lobby after a several year hiatus. Um, the box is back. Um, uh, this is obviously a very popular, it was very popular before when it was there. Uh, the issue with it before was there was no place to take the prescription drugs. I think the closest place back then was Spokane. Then you had to, someone to drive them to Spokane. So it didn't work. This is a new company, a new process. Um, they come and get them, they take care of it. So it's not on us to get rid of them. So the box is there. Um, and again, they're doing some entry level testing later this month for entry level and they are in the final background portion with one lateral candidate. So hopefully that works out well. From the court department, um, their second passport fares on Sunday, uh, September twenty first from eight to four. Currently, all the time slots are booked. Um, they do take walk-ins and they'll fit them in as they can, uh, as they did last time. And then they're still taking appointments for every Wednesday, uh, if anyone would like to get on the, they can still make them for Wednesdays. Uh, the court is also, um, dealing with a recent Supreme Court ruling that took effect September first. This ruling, uh, lowers the amount of time for someone to be arraigned from fourteen days down to three days. Uh, Court Administrator Ramirez is working through this challenge with our judge and prosecutors, uh, uh, to, to abide by this. Um, and this of course obviously is, uh, impacts those that are, uh, currently booked into jail that they have three days to be arraigned instead of fourteen. So, uh, for all small municipalities that have court, you know, once a month, twice a month, this is a pretty big challenge. And so they're working around on how that's going to work for us and working through those kinks. Uh, finance department, boot camp session number two is tomorrow at eleven o'clock in the conference room. Um, from the public services department, Director Colt is establishing a V Mac Veterans Memorial Advisory Committee to assist with the design of the veterans memorial to be constructed in the near future. Splash pad is officially closed for the season. The, it does not look like we will reach that temperature again, and they've already started their annual maintenance, uh, on the, on the splash pad to get ready for next year. Uh, H R new employer orientation takes place one week, uh, from tomorrow. And then in the I T department, they're busy setting up new servers, moving bias to the cloud and updating Laserfish to version twelve. Any questions?
Good version. Councilor Hess.
Uh, I'm just curious, when prior to the water, the water park closing, did you have a dog day this year or like we've had in the past?
I don't believe we've had one, not yet.
I'm just, I was just curious.
Well, those have replaced it. Just no water.
They had water at the park. Not as fun, not as great.
The tradition of the last day.
Yeah.
Dog, let him play.
We did that, I think, twice. Yeah, two years. Maybe we'll bring it back someday. Alright, is that it?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, moving on to my report, attended a few different meetings. A couple of them, very similar, um, reasons. The Experience Olympian Beyond, um, Todd and I met earlier today, actually, with those folks. Um, they're in a search for an executive director. They wanted some feedback on what we'd like to see out of it, um, stuff like that. I had a Thurston Regional Planning Council meeting last week. Um, we're also searching for a new executive director in that committee. And so we're, um, just kind of discuss that search and how that's going. Um, probably by the end of the year, we will have someone in there. Uh, we do have a, a current staff member who's the interim, um, director currently. And lastly, we are trying to help out with the schools as much as we can and be good partners with them. Um, one thing that was brought to my attention was the. One thing that was brought to my attention was the expansion of their, their bus routes, or excuse me, their lack of bus routes. I believe it's a mile that they go out, but historically, they did include Cherry Meadows. And a few of those residents contacted me about the the path to school, to the middle school for their children. And some areas are a little bit overgrown with rush. And normally it's the resident or the homeowner association is responsible. Some areas we are responsible, but we are just going to go and clean up that area immediately to make sure that those kids do have a. Clear path to get to school. And then we are also looking at crosswalks in those areas. How we can bring more visibility of those crosswalks. We're looking at longer-term solutions like actual lit-up crosswalk. But for the meantime, we're going to look at something a little more cost-efficient or cost-effective and use flags. So when you're crossing, we'll have little cross, little flags that you can walk around for increased visibility in the mornings. But yeah, we're still looking for longer-term solutions and funding for some of those options as well. That's all I've got. Let's move on to councilman reports, starting with Councilor Wood.
Thank you. I had a TCOM meeting. We. We went over, so we had an executive summary, very basic. They're always pretty, pretty good summaries as far as what's going on over there. I haven't had any stream issues as far as things that we have to figure out. Well, over there. We do have a staffing academy that started August twenty-fifth to keep bringing on staff. Because we've, I believe since, since I was even began on TCOM, I don't know that we've ever had a full staff. But they've been trying and have gotten close a few times. So I think we're close again. Got another staffing. Academy starting in November as well. They will, there's a, the phone system replacement project, the Vertex Next Generation nine eleven, nine-one-one phone system. Scheduled to go live on the third of November. And the personnel will be, will undergo training on, end of October. And we eliminated a position, some housekeeping, because we picked it up, renamed it another position and gave those duties to that person. That's what I got. I got a transportation meeting in the morning.
Sounds good. Thank you. Arthur Richardson.
Nothing to report.
Councilor Crossman.
No report.
Councilor Kingizer.
I went to the Chamber Forum today and lunch was served by Casamia. Fantastic. We had a wonderful speaker named Mark Harris, who's a special agent for the Gambling Commission. It's the second time he's come out to Yelm to speak with us this year. Our first time meeting him was actually with our nonprofit collaboration through the Chamber. And then today was just the same, so much information. But it's really nice to kind of have him in the area and be able to actually have a face to the phone call. When you're reaching out to figure out what of these things are allowed and how many restrictions there really are on different types of raffles and things like that. So.
Yeah, Councilor Hess.
Intercity Transit Authority, let's, we, they are looking for community advisory committee members. At this time, applications are due by October third. You can go online to the Intercity Transit Authority and get an application. It'd be really great if we could find some residents from Yelm, business owners, you know, somebody to be part of that. That'd be a really good thing to do. And so I'm going to work with Ms. Roy and see if we can get an announcement put there. To also have the link, so we can get that going. Also, there was a individual that shared a story about. And then how someone with Intercity Transit, because of the bus system, the way that we have it operating. That they were able to go through a two-year program for, with the mental health court. After getting rehabilitated and they were able to get their GED. They're working at SP, at South Puget Sound Community College, getting their degree for their associates. And they attribute a lot of the assistance with being able to accomplish these things is through the bus program, being able to. Move around and not be restricted because they didn't have a vehicle. Another thing that I attended on Friday was a, was the Annual Fufu-Ra, which is sponsored by Thurston County. Chamber and it works with the Olympia Yacht Club. Got to ride a wonderful boat. Boat captain, he was a speed demon, which was a lot of fun. And we went to their nice little island, had some wonderful food, met with the service members, that's what's for is. Community member within the Thurston Chamber, as well as elected officials, can go and talk to the service members. Had some good conversations with some service members there and it's, it's really interesting when some of them found out that, you know, I was from Yelm. Because I had to, even though I had a Seahawk for Blue Friday, I also had a Yelm thing on as well. So they were very happy. They're happy about the community. They're enjoying the community. And I think that it's a wonderful thing. I'm hoping I can do it again next year. For the joy that it provides. Other than that, nothing else at this time. Oh, is it okay if I communicate about? The letter, or should I say that?
If you want to respond to that, sure.
We had a letter to the city council from an individual in reference to concerns for annexation of their property as well as their neighbors. I talked with Director Colt and got some information to make sure that when I communicated with them, I was able to answer their concerns. I called the individual, they did not leave an email, but I called them and I let them know that their concerns of, if they have a conservation. With the county, that that's not going to change. That their property right now with the county is zoned as one. House per five acres, but when they get brought into the city, it's going to be open space. You know, green spaces, what's going to be zoned as, so nobody can develop unless the city council changes it. They also had concerns of their well, all their wells, that they would all of a sudden have a meter put on it and they'd have to pay the city. And I said, no, that's not going to happen. We know it's your one, your septic is your septic. And then there was, I let them know that if they look at the property tax form. They will see that county road will be removed as well as county stormwater and no new taxes will be added on. In other words, those will be some savings for them. They had concern about development occurring there. And I told them that with green space, open space, it's, we're working, we're going to work with them to make sure that they stay as that. And so he's going to communicate with the other homeowners. If he has additional questions, they will reach out.
Thank you for responding. Councilor Johnstone.
Last week at Regional Housing Council, we discussed emergency funding for sandy flats. Encampment Resolution Program Funds, engagement with lived experience. Individuals and the five-year homeless housing plan. We also discussed whether or not various councils would be open to having representatives come in and do presentations at study sessions. And I said that we'd be open to that.
Well, we'll get in touch with them. Thank you. Councilor Kaminsky.
Meetings coming up, but nothing to report from last week.
Alrighty, thank you. Moving on, we don't have any executive sessions scheduled. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
There's a second?
Second.
All voters say aye?
Aye.
Any votes say nay? We are adjourned.